Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Welford. I'm a Cohasset resident and Cohasset native. And it's my pleasure to welcome you here, both in person, here at the Lightkeepers, and also on Zoom for our Candidates Forum featuring the Select Board. And it's sponsored by the Hingham League of Women Voters, of which I am a member. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our moderator, Nancy McDonald, who is a Hingham resident. By Hingham League of Women Voters regulations, a resident of the town in which the forum is being held cannot be the moderator. So I will introduce you to Nancy, and she will take it from here. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, and welcome to the Cohasset Candidates Night. Regardless of how you are joining us this evening, whether in person, or remotely, or viewing at a later date, we are glad you are participating. I am Nancy McDonald, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters Hingham and a trained moderator through the League. And I'm honored to be moderating tonight's forum. And I'm here solely in that capacity. As Nina mentioned, I live in Hingham, and I'm not eligible to vote for any of the candidates before you tonight. This meeting will also be rebroadcast -- it is being videoed, and everyone in the room should know that. And it will be rebroadcast on 143 TV in its entirety periodically leading up to the elections. So we encourage you to tell all your friends who couldn't make tonight to watch it again. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots organization for both women and men, working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national levels. As an organization, we do not support or endorse candidates or political parties. The League of Women Voters Hingham represents Hingham, Cohasset, and Hall, and we encourage all of you to join us. This Candidates Night is part of our ongoing voter education efforts to help citizens make informed decisions about upcoming elections. And we hope that over the course of this evening, you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for Cohasset. Tonight's forum will follow a specific format. Each candidate will introduce themselves with a two-minute opening statement. In my role as moderator, I will pose questions to each candidate for a two-minute response. The questions will reflect issues that Cohasset citizens care about and for which the Select Board is able to influence. While this is not a debate, at the end of the questioning period, candidates will have a chance to reply to a particular issue in a one-minute clarification period followed by a one-minute closing statement. Kate Boland and Chris Wilk, also of Hingham's League, will be our timers for this evening. And they will give each candidate a one-minute warning, a 30-second warning, and then the red card will indicate that your time is up. We request that all responses be relevant to the question and respectful to both your fellow candidates and citizens. And to you, our audience, we request that you hold your applause to the end. And if I do my job correctly, we should be out of here by 8:30. So tonight's forum includes the four candidates running for two available seats on the Select Board. Jack Creighton is the incumbent, and he's running for a second, three-year term. Helene Lieb, Paul Grady, and Paul Legel fill out the docket. The two successful candidates will join current Select Board members Diane Kennedy, Corey Evans, and Jean Healy-Dippel. The current incumbent, Carrie Thompson, is not running for reelection. As a reminder, the election is on Saturday, May 14th, at Town Hall, and we encourage everyone to get out and vote. And for those of you not available on the 14th, absentee ballots can be picked up at Town Hall. So let's get started. We will begin with each candidate's two-minute opening statement. And Jack, we will start with you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jack Creighton, and I'm running for reelection to the Cohasset Select Board. I am an incumbent. I moved to Cohasset in 1982, promptly fell in love with it, the love endures. I have two daughters who work for my financial services company, both attended Cohasset schools. I'm a founding principal of an investment securities firm, which has always been challenging, and I've learned many things which I've applied to governance in Cohasset. I've served on the Conservation Commission, Stormwater Committee, Affordable Housing Committee, Harbor Committee, and the Planning and Zoning Working Group. When my office was in Boston, I served as president for 12 years on a neighborhood association. And I also served on numerous civic advisory councils, including the one that actually rezoned the Fenway so Fenway Park could be rebuilt. I had a long depth of experience in a wide variety of governing institutions, and I think I bring a lot of experience to the job. My motto is, and has been, conserve Cohasset's character. And that's not just for the beauty of our town, that's the beauty and the spirit of our citizens. We're self-governed, we have boards and commissions, they do a very, very good job. One of the reasons our town is so special is the work that was done earlier. Among the issues that I think are important, we need to conserve our character, control and development. Our schools need to be funded, many other things need to be funded, and we need to pay attention. I do want to mention that we are so glad to have our new fire chief, you know, John McCroy. I was proud to assist that he was in there, but most of it came because of the students, the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Helene? Thank you all for coming tonight. I moved to Cohasset in 1980 with my husband, Ed Lappin, who passed 11 years ago. And soon after that, our children, Ross and Nina, also went to Cohasset Schools K-12. We all love the natural beauty, the excellent schools, and the history and the people of this jewel of the town. When I was 10, I was inspired by JFK's speech, President JFK asked not what the country could do for you, but ask what you could do for that country. And that began my life of public service. In the past 30 years, 13 years, I have served six years on the school committee, two as chair, and six years on the advisory, one year as chair, working with many of the boards and the committees in our town. As a member of the Cohasset Social Service League, I helped raise money and made the dream of a haven for Cohasset seniors come true. I know how to get things done by listening to the input of others, research, hard work, and bringing out the best in people. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Helene. Paul Grady?
Good evening, Cohasset, and thank you very much for having us. And I'd like to thank League of Women Voters, Nancy and Nina, thank you very much for organizing this nice event. My name is Paul Grady. I'm running for the Select Board. I'm running for basically three main reasons. Tough to put into words sometimes, so I'm thinking about Cohasset.
Paul, can you speak more into that microphone?
Sorry about that. My wife and I moved to Cohasset in 2007. We had our daughter Shannon just about eight days later. She's grown up in the schools. I have my one-person cheering section here, and I'm thrilled. But she's going through the schools, and I work in the energy business, my wife works in healthcare, and we will learn to raise our daughter. My wife serves on Conservation Commission, I serve on the Planning Board. And the reasons we've got involved in the town is because we love the town we live in. So in running for this, I'll keep it brief because I see it down to one minute already, so I've let it slide, is basically my motto, to paraphrase Jack, is preserve, protect, and plan. We'd like to preserve the past and the beauty that's so intrinsic to Cohasset. We'd also like to protect the present, the schools, the children, so they have a place that they can always call home. And we want to plan carefully for the future. But I will leave it at that, since I'm down to 30 seconds. Thanks so much.
May I ask everyone to speak directly into the microphone? The sound is going in and out, I'm not exactly sure why. Thank you. For the Zoom, we can all hear you well here.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Paul Legel?
My name is Paul Legel. I am a very proud fourth-generation county, with the past 69 years, almost 70. I have four children, born, raised, educated, and flourishing here. I'm a retired Cohasset police officer. I run my own construction business, which I have had for 41 years. I've served on the Board of Directors and coached for 20 years, over a length of 20 years in that. I used basketball programs, coached in that for over 20 years, as well as used football. Was one of the original builders of what is now the library playground, but was the Aldwood Playground back then. My family has been involved in caring and preserving this town for over 100 years. I have a love for the town that you can't have unless you've been here this long, really. I know, I understand, but it's in your blood. I have seen in my time many changes, both good and bad. My issues are this, we don't do anything about our infrastructure, we need to pay attention. It's cheaper to maintain than it is to rebuild. Have to make changes, necessary changes. Our buildings are in the same situation. Now, I'm not just talking about roads and sidewalks, which are right now, I think, a deplore. They've deteriorated continually over the last 10 to 15 years. I also have a very serious issue with communication between the town administration and the public, particularly the seniors. The seniors don't get information, and if we have to send them mailing for important issues to every household, like we did the town warrant, then that's what needs to be done, because people don't get the messages. We need to get messages, we need to get more information to the people that pay the taxes. That's where I'm looking at it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So next, we have nine questions for you to answer. So we have prepared nine, and these are based on citizen input from Cohasset. You have two minutes each to respond, and we'll rotate through each of you, who will go first. All right? So the first question, it's a little bit long, so I will repeat it if necessary. But the first question is, "When it comes right down to it, many people don't really know what the Select Board does. Cohasset's bylaws state that, quote, 'The mission of the Select Board is to protect, maintain, and enhance our dynamic community, historical heritage, and coastal environment by providing thoughtful leadership and fostering citizen engagement.' It also says, 'The Select Board serves as the chief goal-setting and policymaking body of the town. The town manager, employees, and other town officers implement the guidelines and policy directives formulated by the Select Board.' The question is, how do you understand the role of the Select Board?" And we'll start this one with Helene, and if you'd like me to repeat it, it is long.
No, I get it.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. In my mind, it is policymaking. When I was on the school board, that's what we did, policy made. And the people in the central office were the ones that were responsible to institute the policy. And policy means that we set the tone for the rest of the town when it comes to policies dealing with governance, dealing with, well, first off, the policies dealing with all the different departments, working with them. And I think it is important that we work with communication with people, we need to get input from our town. And there's policies dealing with liquor licenses, there's policy dealing with people utilizing the resources and services in our town. We have a lot of requests that affect infrastructure, dealing with our roads. We have many, many nonprofits who want to use our town and our byways, and the Select Board has to make decisions, also dealing with safety issues in our town, all the different departments, there's, you know, set policies, but mainly dealing with governance. And they are the supervisor, they're the ones in charge, it's like the Board of Directors. They are responsible for the town manager, hiring and not hiring, and supervising the town manager. Very simple. These are the things that I was doing as chair of the school board for multiple years. So that's how I see it.
All right. Thank you, Helene. Paul Grady?
Nancy, just one more question, but I'll give it one more time.
Absolutely. "When it comes right down to it, many people don't really know what the Select Board does. Cohasset's bylaws state that, quote, 'The mission of the Select Board is to protect, maintain, and enhance our dynamic community, historical heritage, and coastal environment by providing thoughtful leadership and fostering citizen engagement.' It also states, 'The Select Board serves as the chief goal-setting and policymaking body of the town. The town manager, employees, and other town officers implement the guidelines and policy directives formulated by the Select Board.' So how do you understand the role of the Select Board?"
Well, to me, the Select Board has a trust placed in by the people of Cohasset who elected them and trust them to take care of the town, take care of the schools, take care of the roads, implement a change when necessary, and communication is where I don't see from the Select Board, is the communication. I find, you know, too many things have been passed without consensus. I'm a firm believer in consensus. I think everybody in the town should know. I think what the Select Board should be doing is creating more forums so people do know exactly what's going on, they, when a change is implemented, they know the consequences of those proposed changes, they know the impact it may have on them, their home, their backyard. As I see on the Select Board, too many people find out just too late that this property is going to go up behind their home or something like that. I find that's where the Select Board is lacking in some aspects. They are, they have a trust, and I don't think they always live up to it. I think that there should be clear communication, I'm sorry, to the Select Board, between the town manager. I think there should be, as I said, open forums for every available option that we have at our fingertips to let the people know, and then ask consensus. Go out and meet the people, go to the events, see what's going on, see, kick a finger on the pulse. Re-revive the Select Board corner, for instance. I understand that was a page that was put out, and that people allowed to voice their opinions, talk. I mean, we have some more available communication platforms, but they should be maximized. And that's what I think the Select Board should be doing right now. Thank you.
And Jack?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, as a sitting member of the Select Board, I'm intimately familiar with what we do, or sometimes what we should be doing and don't do. We are the executive authority. Of course, it does not have a mayor, it has a Select Board, five of us. And we do appoint the boards and committees, conservation, planning, well, planning is voted on, and we're appointing these. We also, we do not appoint the fire chief, but we have to ratify that. Same with the police chief, we have great powers. As we saw with Fire Chief Dockry, the Select Board declined to ratify the appointment of somebody else, and by listening to the citizens, we were able to ensure that John Dockry is our new fire chief. And by the way, just, people want to know, the fact that the citizens spoke forced the hand of the Select Board, and that's a thing where the citizens want, and I'm very proud we were able to do that. The other things that we do is we do set the tone. One of the things that I have a great concern with, and I would, you know, echo Paul Grady, is that frequently, there'll be perfunctory information that we are given before we have to vote. It goes out on Friday afternoon without any background information. We were looking at contracts where we don't have copies of the contracts. And I think there's, approvals need to be made, and those people who know me know that very clearly I am the one who raises my hand and points it out, and frequently I lose those votes. But that doesn't mean that I will not continue to do that. I speak for those people, place the trust in me, and I will make sure, to the best of my ability, that the citizens have the knowledge and information they need, because after all, this is your town. And I have to stop now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Question number two. You could have volunteered -- oh, my gosh, Paul! I'm so sorry.
I was quite fine, you know.
I apologize.
The Select Board, they are elected to take care of you and yours, and the town, the town primarily. Part of that is, yes, setting policies. But the most important part to me is making sure those policies are fulfilled the way they should be. That includes, you know, not just passing it to the town manager, you have to make sure he does his job, you have to make sure he makes other people do their job, because it doesn't happen all the time. I've seen it firsthand. Things aren't inspected, things aren't approved, for some reason, we've got to be as a town, it's okay for us if we don't get the best quality of work out of a contractor, or we don't get the job quite finished, and we just sign off on it. The Select Board should never allow that, because that's the trust that you've been given by the people that elect you. And it's important that you give them a reason to have that faith in you, and making sure that projects and policies are followed through. And, you know, personnel, I have an issue with some, I think there's issues with that. The Select Board has to, I think, be more involved with personnel, we've had huge turnovers in personnel in the Town Hall, don't know what the problem is, but that's something that the Select Board, I think, should be more involved in than just handing the keys to the car to the town manager all the time. And that's what I think they should be doing.
All right. I'm so sorry. Now we'll go to question two. All right, question two. You could have volunteered or run for any number of other positions on important boards in town, and several of you already have. What is it about the Select Board that attracts you? And what experience or vision do you have that will add to the mix of members on the team? And we will start this one with Paul Grady.
Thank you for the question. I'm not going to lie, the Select Board is the center of action. You know, having served in the United States Marine Corps and in a busy company that was exempt during the COVID crisis, I had to get the job done, you know, in different aspects of my life. And I think that the Select Board is the place to visit to get that job done, whether, to paraphrase Mr. Legel, working with the town manager, holding them accountable, him accountable, looking at the staff. And I think the Select Board are also a wonderful opportunity to get the word out. I think there should be more communication between the Select Board and every existing board and committee that we have. You know, I'd like to see more participation if I was a member at, say, the Planning Board level, at, say, CONCON, in protecting our wetlands, you know, control growth, to see what, before what's going up, what kind of impact any building is going to have on our harbors, you know, correcting our schools, prioritizing, informing people. The Select Board has, they can inform the town of anything going on, budgetary matters, for instance, Town Hall. I don't know now, I know it was approved for Town Hall, but I'm also for people knowing exactly what that Town Hall is going to cost. I'd like to see what's going on as far as rebuilding our schools, our roads, instead of concentrating on one key area just to make it look good. I don't think Cohasset should be a Potemkin village, one street, one area, one part of town looks nice, when another person walking down the street is tripping over there, just trying to walk their dog or put their child on a school bus, and there's no sidewalk to stand on. The Planning Board is limited in what it can do. I've enjoyed my time on the Planning Board, I still do, and I think we've made some positive changes. There's some great people on that board. And I think the Select Board has some refined people, but I also think that it's time for a change. I think it's time to balance it out. I think it's time to get more involvement with people in the town, get them to speak up, work with them, and shift them. Thank you so much.
Paul Legel?
Thank you. I want to be on the Select Board because I want to make a difference. I think change is really necessary. The town has gone in different directions recently, and not necessarily in the right direction. I'm the only one that hasn't served in an appointed or an elected position. I think someone needs to be on the Select Board that hasn't done that, and hasn't gone and made connections that they have kind of owe things to. You know, it's time for a change. We need a little bit of change and attitude. I'm a get-it-done guy. I don't take no for an answer. If someone says no to me, I say why. And I think that is something of an attitude this town needs to have. Get back to your roots, accept nothing but the best, because this place is the best. Start treating it like it. I'm a candidate for a change.
Thank you. And Jack?
Yeah, thank you. Of course, I'm on the Select Board, I'm kind of in the belly of the beast. Why did I run? I was asked to run. I'm very reluctant. I have a very full life, I have lots of things that I'm doing, but I do believe in giving back, and I was asked, I was originally asked to go on conservation, and gentleman's here and here there, and I'm looking at him. I've never forgiven him. This was, I went on just before the Cat Dam, and I survived the James Island, I've been sued, everything like that. But I do it because, you know, we are privileged to live in this town, and not privileged in a derogatory manner, we are fortunate. And then we need to be true to the spirit. And when you talk to people in Cohasset, you know what they say? They look around and they say, "I love living here." And because of that, there's a different atmosphere. And I regard that as a trust, and I can make a difference, and I think that I have made a difference. I have forced some issues to the forefront that would not have. I do open my mouth when things are not fully disclosed, because I believe that you, the people, deserve to know what the people's business is. The government isn't something, isn't something special. The government only has power because it's your power. And when you ask a question, and maybe you're not articulate, or maybe you don't do it the right way, or maybe you don't know, you know, you're not friends with somebody in high places, it doesn't make any difference. You're entitled to that information. And those people who've watched the Select Board meetings have noticed that there's somebody that you can depend upon to open their mouth and speak for you, and I intend to continue to doing that, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Helene? Last but not least, I decided that I wanted to run for Select Board because some of the spirit in this town needs a little tweaking. And basically, what I see, and what a lot of the people that I talk to, is that there's a lot of, I don't know if nasty is the best word, but disrespect. I want to represent a new age of being able to talk to each other, all, whether young or old, or townies or new people, that we all get together and are able to respect whatever ideas. When I was on the school board, brought in, one of the people asked me, I was just mailing, doing the mailing, and said, "Helene, we need you, we need a psychologist. The school board is falling apart." And so I stepped it up, and I brought the best out of the people. I saw goodness in each one of them. One had an amazing memory, one had other different things. So when I serve, I want to do what many of the things people here notice, but I bring with leadership from the school board. Advisory taught me about all the different departments in this town, and I learned so many things, but things kind of fell apart in some of the committees and boards here. People don't listen to each other. I bring patience, compassion, and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to question three. So question three. Join us. How would you prepare for each decision that the Select Board must make? Or, put another way, how do you know what is important to the citizens of Cohasset, and who do you listen to? And for this one, we'll start with Paul Legel.
First of all, who do you listen to? You ask questions of people you see and you meet, and you know. You ask the question, what do you want? What do you think we need? And you do research on what their issues are, and then you bring it to the Select Board, and you try to find solutions, common sense solutions, not costing a lot of money solutions, common sense. And that's what the Select Board should be doing, listen to people.
Paul Grady? How would you prepare for each decision that the Select Board must make? Or, put another way, how do you know what is important to the citizens of Cohasset, and who would you listen to?
Well, first, I listen to my wife and my daughter, where I'm in a heck of a lot of trouble.
You're in trouble.
Secondly, like I do on the Select Board, on the Planning Board, I apologize for putting my car to the worst, put a finger on the pulse of the town. I ask, you know, I ask friends first. I ask friends first, they bring other opinions second, talk, discuss. I look at Cohasset 143, see what's out there. I see whatever available news. If it's a project coming up, I investigate that project. If I need information, I'll reach out to the Town Hall. In other words, I do like to do research. I tend to move quickly, I make decisions fast, so it doesn't mean I can't learn, but the people I listen to first, again, my wife, my daughter, my friends, the town. I read the social and I try to take a finger on the pulse of any issue I happen to be working on at any given time, be it at work or for the planning board. And I would do the same for the Select, or only on a greater platform, I hope. Thank you.
And Jack?
Yes, thank you. There's two parts to this question. How do you make your decision? I made my decision on the basis of the information that I've provided. We receive on the Select Board on Friday afternoon a packet, which is information. Quite honestly, I've been trying to get more complete information, and I'd like to get it sooner. I need to see contracts, I need to see financial projections, and that's very important, and that's what the staff should be providing. But that brings up another issue, which is, how do I hear from all of you? How do I hear from my citizens? Number one, every time I send you an email, you'll notice that there's my personal cellphone on there, and it's the same telephone number that my clients have. So if you call, I answer, and I listen, and I try to reach out. What I would like to see is to have you have access to the same information. When I was on Concom, we tried to have, so every time there's anything before Concom, everybody in the community could see all of the filings. And I think that should be extended to every bit of government access, should be on the town website and easily researchable. Now, yes, it is on there, but good luck finding it. We need our town website completely revamped, so when each and every one of you has a question that requires a factual information that the town has, you should have it as well as myself. So that's kind of what I would do. So there's twofold. You communicate with me, you have my cellphone number, and I think that every towns person should have the same information, easily accessible, as members of the town government have. Thank you.
Haleen? I believe that there's many ways to stay in touch with the people in the heartbeat of this town. I think it's important to be at events that are important to the citizens. Hanging out at the senior center, I learn a lot from the wisdom of some of the people who've been here for many, many years. And I also think you need to be able to make yourselves accessible in terms of social media. I have a website, which is a big deal for me, being a child of the 70s and 80s, and I definitely put my phone out there, all the different phones. Being a psychologist, I have some time that I'm not as available during those times, but usually I have my Batmobile behind me and people know that I will answer that, including the citizens of Cohasset. And that's how I've always been. For every board, I've been on school board, school committee, advisory, people just know me. I've been all over the place. And I think it is important to, in terms of how we're going to communicate to each other, that has to be a steady thing. More information needs to go out. I would like the people of Cohasset to have a Cohasset fair, where they understand what the school board does, but all the committees, and have tables out, and so that they can volunteer and be part of a two-way street of communication constantly.
Thank you. So, question four. It is the Select Board's responsibility to appoint committee members to very impactful committees such as zoning and affordable housing. Many of the most pressing issues facing the town are technically the responsibility of those other boards, yet seats are going unfulfilled. Unfilled, sorry. At the same time, town politics this past year have been extremely divisive. Volunteers on boards and town staff have had to put up with a level of incivility and disrespect that would test the thickest of skin. Much of it seems to be fueled by social media. Do you have experience finding, selecting, and managing volunteers? And what would you do to encourage people to join or run for a committee? And how would you set the tone for more positive, productive conversations? And Jack, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you. One of the things, when you ask people to serve, they will put up with that, there's a lot of it. I mean, we're not all that thin-skinned. When I was on boards and committees, we were some controversial decisions where people decided that they would attempt to win by legal intimidation, when somebody shows up at your house and they deliberately serve you at your home instead of at the Town Hall like they're supposed to, and your wife and kids are wondering what's going on. But, look, I'm all grown up. That's fine. This key to it is that when boards and commissions do something properly, and they almost invariably do, we have to support them. Town has to support them. And you'll find that when they get that support, they notice it and they're willing to do their job. And people who are on the boards and committees will tell you that they'll get a call from me saying, "You did a good job. Thank you very much." And that encouragement, I think, is part of the bully pulpit of the Select Board. When you're on the Select Board, I mean, it's really not my style, but I've come to understand that when you speak as a Select Board member, that it carries a certain weight. And when you tell somebody they've done a good job, you're really, you have the power of the people that you represent, and that's a sacred trust, at least it is for me. And so, oh, I said 30 seconds, but I can count now. But I think that's important, and I think that I have demonstrated that I do support the boards and committees, and I do encourage people to do that, and that's very important. And if there's something that we all need to do, is we need to say thank you to anybody who's in a board and committee. And I'll say to all of them right now, thank you again.
Haleen?
Thank you. I think it's really important that, first off, in recruiting, I've been a recruiter for people on the boards for a long time now to Cohasset, conservation, all different types of boards. My neighbors will come up to me and say, "You've been around a while. What boards?" And I describe them. But also, I think that we need some training for all the chairs of the boards to teach them some group process things, because I think with some training, it doesn't have to get nasty. It doesn't have to get that way. And there are, being a person who ran groups, had therapy groups, all kinds of training groups, worked at the universities, but also worked to make the school board and advisory board a place where all comments were vetted and considered and thought about, to make sure we don't make premature closure, we don't get into this group think mentality. We are open-minded to different opinions. That, I think, the board leaders need some training on, and I think our government could offer that. Thank you.
Paul Grady?
Would you run that question by me? I just want to cover every topic.
Sure. It is the Select Board's responsibility to appoint committee members to very impactful committees such as zoning and affordable housing. Many of the most pressing issues facing the town are technically the responsibility of these other boards, yet seats are going unfilled. At the same time, town politics this past year has been extremely divisive. Volunteers on boards and town staff have had to put up with a level of incivility and disrespect that would test the thickest of skin. Much of it seems to be fueled by social media. Do you have experience finding, selecting, and managing volunteers? And what would you do to encourage people to join or run for a committee? And how would you set the tone for more positive, productive conversations?
Well, I think the tone is slowly being set. There is some changes coming in that have progressed along with different additions to the Select Board, I think in a very positive way. My impression of Cohasset is I love the town, but I've seen it, is that it's been run by a small group of people for a very long period of time. And I don't think there's a few of those people that don't like change, and they might sow some device in this as new people come along. And I think change is important for this town. I think for a long period of time, as I said, that the needs of the few have outweighed the needs of the many, and I think that's about to change. And it is, it's happened, I've seen on Select Board, it's happened, I believe, on planning, and it's happening in the other committees, that people are getting involved. But to get people more involved, I think you have to make it more attractive to them. Many of us work. My wife works in healthcare. She serves on Concom, works killer hours. I'm out of the house usually about 5:30 in the morning to make sure that people aren't cold or they're not too hot, and getting our daughter off school. Many people do the same things. But then you come home, you get on a conservation commission meeting, you're up till 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, when you're getting up at 7:00. I think there's got to be some guidelines set. There has to be some consideration for those people so they can take into account and get on those boards and realize that they still can take care of their family, get their child to swim practice, get their child to sailing, rowing, football, baseball, or soccer. I don't think that's taken into account, and so it does not make, I've seen in firsthand experience, people have shied away from involving themselves in that just because of those factors. But I think by putting some guidelines and some strictures down, then I think you would see more participation, you'd see a heck of a lot more if people were aware of the issues. And the Select Board was an open house and an open door, and Town Hall was an open house and an open door. And I think I'm down to it right now.
All right, thank you. All right, question five. Oh my gosh, shall I do it again?
It's so quiet in Dumeore.
I think he gets an extra minute.
It's two calls, I apologize. Oh my goodness.
Let me have a few words.
All right. Paul, please.
I think some of the problem with volunteers on the boards is the feeling, whether it's there or not, of the lack of support from the Town Hall in general. As far as recruiting, I think you need to reach out if boards aren't being filled and find people that specialize in that board, in their own lives, in their own vocation, and try to get them to come and make it attractive to them because it's something they know, they have knowledge of. And if they have knowledge of that particular type of board, whether it's conservation, planning, zoning, whatever board you want to go with, if that's their specialty in their private life, they may be more attracted to serving something they know, instead of coming on cold and learning it as they go. So that's what I would end up, I'd go and look, I'd search out people that are in the particular vocation that those boards tend to work with. That's all I need.
All right, question five. Anyone?
Don't skip me again.
No. I'm a psychologist.
I need to rest my voice.
So, question five. Have you read the master plan adopted in 2019 and followed the progress of the master plan implementation committee? What can the Select Board specifically do to further progress on this huge and comprehensive list of goals and strategies? Is there an area that interests you most where your expertise would be valuable? For this one, we're going to start with Haleen.
The master plan. Well, there's a lot of things about it. I think we need to have a committee in terms especially dealing with the infrastructures in this town. I was talking to the Town Manager about it recently because we have a lot of facilities in particular that need to be attended to, and he was talking about that there needs to be some sort of master plan, a subcommittee dealing with all the different types of facility needs we have coming up right in the near future. The school facilities, the Town Hall, obviously, that's in progress, and also the fire and police type of facilities. So I'm interested in that because it involves the schools, definitely, that subset of the master plan. And also the financial part. We need to be thinking about finance and how we're going to do some of these things that the town needs to do. Also, we have to dig deep in terms of our infrastructure, the water in sewer, all those type of things have to be addressed. But mainly, I'm very interested in the facilities, and I'm also into the finance. My undergrad was in mathematics, and so, in financial planning, so I would be interested in that.
All right, thank you. Paul Grady?
The master plan. While I applaud the committee, I don't know, I've read through it to a degree. I find it concentrates on just some key areas, and while it gets into some of the most things like the schools, roads, I'm not seeing priorities. I just think that you need town involvement to prioritize. If it's taking apart the master plan, starting from scratch and looking at it, where do we start? Do we start with the schools? Do we start with the streets? Do we start with rezoning? Do we start with, where do you start and where do you complete it? And as Haleen said, and it's where do you get the money? But what are the priorities? To me, you have to have the roads to get into town, you have to have the schools, you have the Town Hall. But what's the most important? And to get that, to create a real master plan, I think you need full town consensus. I think every issue should be laid in front of the people in the town, be it 143, be it in every forum, and get their opinion, too. Again, I've seen it too many times where things have passed in the dead of the night and you just don't even know they passed before you turn around and it's already done. And the hell comes the armchair quarterbacking. I don't think anybody in this town should be an armchair quarterback. I don't think we have the time or the energy. I think that's the Select Board's job, is to inform the town. So with the master plan, again, I applaud the committee, but I'd like to see some changes as to town-wide projects. What are the top priorities? What is the town's input? And set a date for that, and then if we don't reply, then really we have no one to blame but ourselves. And that's how I'd leave that. Thank you.
And Paul Legel?
I have not read the master plan. I don't really know why I would have. I have seen bits and pieces of it. I've seen the proposed reconstruction of Elm Street, which I'm totally baffled by, and I don't know where that thought process came from. I do agree, and I mentioned this earlier, that we need to start paying attention to what we have, not what we're going to do in the future. We've got to take care of what we have and do it now. We've got to stop procrastinating about repairs. For some reason, we're not making them. This infrastructure is the most important part of the town. We're not taking care of it. The master plan isn't going to change that. We need to change that. Like I said, I didn't read the master plan, I've just seen the bits of it. Like I said, the Elm Street thing is crazy. And that's the only part I know of from the master plan, sorry, not going to lie to you.
And Jack?
You can forget me, that's all right.
No, I was just making sure Paul was done.
Okay, thank you very much. Where would you like me to start? We have a master plan. The zoning bylaw is a subset of the master plan. A little how I spend my time with zoning bylaws, harbor resiliency, dealing with the sewers that's coming from situated to our harbor. Do we need to have a municipal sewerage plant? Roads, the roads are atrocious, they need to be fixed. The initial, speaking of Elm Street, the initial projection was $5.1 million, which was clearly for one street, and that included a new intersection. Fortunately, that's now down to a reasonable 1.5. There was some scale that was moved back. There's a lot of things that are going on, and keeping track of them is difficult. I spend a lot of time on that, and I do talk about that a lot. That's probably why I don't get invited to a lot of cocktail parties, but that's another story. It's important that you pay attention to who you elect to the Select Board. Are they willing to put up the work? Do they have experience? Now, of course, I believe that I have that, and others do as well. But it's very important that we pay attention. I had a client once, and I had put together a very elaborate plan for them, and halfway through that, she looked at me, and she's a very, very proper woman, she looked at me and said, "Jack, shut up." And I go, she added a little words, but I said, "Well, what did I do?" And she says, "I don't need to know this, expletive. All I need to know is that..." All I need to know is that you know it." So pay attention to who you vote for, for the select board, and we'll pay attention to who we appoint to the boards of committee. And you need to also volunteer to the boards and committees. And when you do, you'll find that Jack Creighton will support you 100%. Thank you.
All right. Question six. Most residents of Cohasset agree that our small town character, appreciation for our historic roots and natural beauty are part of Cohasset's appeal. We are now experiencing intense high-end residential development across town with some new commercial projects as well. What characteristics of Cohasset do you want to see preserved or enhanced and where do you see that new growth coming from? Are you in favor of updating Cohasset zoning bylaws that are over 50 years old? And for this one, we'll start with Paul Grady.
So the character of Cohasset. That's what drew us here to the first place. I've been coming to Cohasset since I was a little boy and I mean, it was Situate. And my mother grew up in Cohasset over the summers for years and years. And Cohasset's changed. You know, I see in Situate, I'm planning, so my, my motives weren't completely altruistic to get on the planning board. They wanted to build 26 condominiums right down in the flood zone, right down the street from my house. And we fought it. And to date, successful. But I've seen houses going up. I've fought on the planning board for the law exemptions. Not that I'm against grandfathering things, but the zoning has got to change here. We are not planning for the future. You know, we have this project going up, the condominiums. You know, I hesitate to think what's going to happen down the road. We get a flood, nasty flood situation or something like that. We're not looking at the ancillary effects of what we're doing. And that's frustrating at the very best. So I do believe that the zoning laws have to be rewritten, they have to be written. I do applaud the zoning bylaw group 110%. But I also think that people have to be made aware of the effects of these laws and they're not being made aware of them. At the last town meeting, there was a group that shot down many of the zoning bylaws, but they were there for a certain reason. There was a voting block, they got in and part of the law got shot down. And they have their own reasons for that, but I think if more of the town knew what's happening in Cohasset, I think you'd have more of a fight. You'd have, people would know what's going on, they would see, and then they would partake. And we do need to preserve the character of this town. There's an intrinsic beauty to Cohasset. I've said it before. I've seen some of the plan where people are planning to make this town a destination zone. I don't find Cohasset a destination zone. I find it a beautiful little town, lucky enough to live in, that has a fantastic harbor, nice beaches, and it's a great place to visit.
Jack?
Thank you. Of course, you know, conservation, stormwater, I saw that firsthand and I can assure you that what we learn from that is that Cohasset has a carrying capacity of a certain number of people. And we are probably close to that carrying capacity in which the natural environment and our human environment has an ability to support. And we have to understand that we're there. We also have to understand that at 8,000 people, there's only how big of a downtown that we can support. There aren't enough rooftops and spending dollars to support grandiose downtowns. So we have to understand why it is that Cohasset is so special. And when we understand that and we understand carrying capacity, that starts, that leads us down the path of understanding the limits of growth, which we need to understand as a community. When we understand that, what we can do with zoning is we can say like, we can have auxiliary apartments to help with the affordability issue. Somebody's in a big house, they can put a small apartment and we can do that and preserve the character of the town. But we do have to understand, there is a limit of our carrying capacity and we do have to pay attention to that because that's why we live here. And we've also, this is a very special town. You can go all up and down the eastern seaboard and you won't find a jewel as special as our little town. So at least for me, I feel that, that's kind of a trust of the generations and I don't want to be a little maudlin about that. But you know, if people ask me, "Why do you do that, Jack?" And you know, if I answer that, they look at me like I'm nuts and maybe I am. But I believe that. And that's why I want to continue as serving on your select board. Thank you.
Yes, I believe that we need to definitely preserve the beauty of Cohasset in its historical past and it's very important that we keep in mind some of the things that are impinging upon that. Part of it has to do with nature and some of our vulnerabilities. I listened to that talk dealing with the resiliency and especially dealing with storms. And to have 99 vulnerable spots in Cohasset, it just made me sick inside. 99, I mean, roads, infrastructures, our sewer system, all that we have to take care of. Otherwise, we're going to be very hampered moving forward. The zoning bylaws, it's been since nineteen, the 1980s, they haven't been updated. I mean, that's like, that's mind-boggling to me. And in terms of new growth, that should be dictated by our mission here. The beauty of Cohasset, the character, we first have to first deal with our infrastructure and do the financial planning and we have to be very responsible with new growth. Some of it should be definitely with affordable housing. I talked to many people here. They want to stay in Cohasset. My daughter's friends can't afford to live here, they grew up here. Our service people, our police and fire department, they can't afford to live here. And our seniors are definitely troubled by this. So we, if we have new growth, I would like to see it. You know, we have the 40B situation going on. I talked to the town manager about that. You know, we, we're very much fluctuating in that 10% area and we need to be focused on affordable housing for our seniors and the people and some of the people who grew up here, 100 years' worth of family and are priced out of the town, that's not okay. So the character Cohasset involves all of these different things. Thank you.
Question seven. Oh my God, did I do it again? Somebody fire me, this is crazy.
Excuse me, I'm trying to get a, trying to get a complex.
I know. It really, really, really is, there's.
Apparently.
You have a psychologist.
Anita Sappi, I should have.
I apologize, please.
You want to talk about change? I haven't known, I've got my driver's license, there were no streetlights on Forest Avenue. Imagine? There was no houses except for one each end and two little ones in the middle. Those are change. So when you come to zoning, I'm in the building biz, I don't build, but I am an excavating contractor and I'm around it all the time. It was many, it wasn't that long ago, but 25 years ago, if you had wetlands in front of your house, your property, you couldn't use your property. So a very bright fellow with some money sued the town, not this town, but a town in Massachusetts, that they had to buy his property at, at market value because they were denying him his use. So you have to be careful with zoning. They tried to zone through the border of Health and Hingham and lost. My point is this, they lost, so now you have to do replications when you do a wetlands crossing to get to your property, but you can't be denied. So if you change zoning and it gets to the point where someone has a piece of land and you make it unusable, you have to be careful with it, you don't end up in a position like that. Zoning needs to be done realistically with common sense and thought for everybody's future, not just ours. You know, it's just, it's a tough situation. You know, as far as keeping the town, the tone of the town, I, I don't know, I keep going back to it and I apologize, but you're going to start taking care of the place. And we as a people, the select board, town manager and all the people that work underneath them, but it comes down to the select board has to make sure these things are done. It's their responsibility that things are cleaned and fixed and maintained.
All right, now question seven. I am going to start with Paul this time. He is number one on this one, so yes.
I'm getting a raise.
Question seven. Planning for the town's financial stability comes under the select board's purview. Please share how you view the town's budget commitments and our plans for future capital improvements. How would you prioritize what we need to do? And we will start with Paul Lejeune.
Is, did you read that again at the beginning of the question? Sorry.
Planning for the town's financial stability comes under the select board's purview. How would, please share how you view the town's budget commitments and our plans for future capital improvements and how would you prioritize what we need to do?
First and foremost, I think the town is over budgeted and underperformed. I think that we pay a lot of money for not great results. As far as prioritizing, I think I made my point. Roads, infrastructure, buildings, must take care of them. And you know, major outline projects, you have to pick, you fight. You have to have a list, make a list of priorities and come to some kind of agreement as to what is number one. And it shouldn't best be the select board. That should go in front of a town meeting and decide what is the most important. You know, if we have to, you know, send a mailing out, make sure people know about it because, you know, you can't make capital decisions without everybody's input, I don't think. Not if you're talking spending millions of dollars on something. You know, you're going to spend 60, 70 million dollars to redo the high school. Everybody should know what it is and what it's going to cost them.
Jack?
Well, okay, I'm kind of speaking of something that is very, very important, it gets dull, you want to put the green eye shades on. First of all, let's differentiate, there's capital expenditures and their operating costs. Let's talk about capital expenditures. Capital expenditures are when you build a new school, it's going to last for a long time. Capital expenditures would be when you build new athletic fields, they're going to last a long time. Capital expenditures, the town hall. Do we need a new police and fire? Now, when you decide that, you need to know what it's going to cost. Now, just hold, sit down everyone. The schools, and we just recently put forth in, into the bureaucratic gears to find out what the schools are going to cost for the high school and the middle school. Ballpark, 70 to 170 million dollars, depending upon whether we need new schools or they need to be rebuilt. We don't know figure, we're trying to find that out. Whichever comes in, we're going to have to spend something because the schools need work. Town hall, it's up to about 15 million. It's a necessity, we have to do it, there's public support. Do we need police and fire? When you make those projections, you then have to go and how are we going to pay for it? There's debt overrides, bonding is cheap right now, maybe we have to do that. But this is where you really have to pay attention and this is where some of the dullness and the challenge of my job really is, is to try to figure that out. It's not easy, but the role of good government is to do that hard work so you can be explained in easy to understand terms what it means and what it's going to cost. It's not easy. But you know, nobody, we volunteered to do this, so hold our feet to the fire. Thank you.
Yes, financial planning. Well, basically, in terms of financial planning, it's building, it's like a building block type of situation. Advisory board and select board meet together in a conjoint type of way and we begin to build the budget for the town. That is on the town side. It is less to do with capital expenditures, that is the mega projects that happen. And we build the budget by meeting with all the different departments and have a group, we actually, thanks to one of our members of the advisory at that point, had a blueprint where we asked the departments and the boards to come up with what they thought would be some of their needs moving forward and what were their budget projections. And also, you know, putting that all together. And you start like in September and October. We used to start much later. And that's how you build the budget that consists of the schools, all the different departments. And that has to be looked at. And there are, like, you can't spend what you don't have. And when it comes to an override, that's the last option. We also have to examine what's going on in the state. We get money from the state. We have to get a sense of that money coming in, what is our chances? Often, we can figure out some idea how that's going to be going. I worked with some of our legislators, in particular Joan, and we talked about some of the ways that that could impact us moving forward. So that is, it's a process. The capital expenditures and also this moving the budget in, in working with the select board and the advisory and the different committees.
And Paul Grady?
Thank you. Good question. No matter how you cut it, people pay an awful lot of money to live in Cohasset. Where's that money going? I think people should know. I assume there should be clarity, I think there should be communication. And the effects of where that money is spent. You know, as Jack mentioned, capital expenditures, schools, fields, town hall, police. What comes first? That should be brought to a vote. Pick and choose. What comes first, what's more important, our kids, the town hall, which is, they're all important, the town hall holding 15 to 20 employees, employees, I'm sorry, or just repair that town hall for the time being instead of letting it fall apart? Repair it. What comes in first? The schools, the kids, the roads. Bid processes. I today don't understand anything about the bid process in Cohasset. I'd like to because there could be other construction companies, builders, developers and things like that that might come in under dollar. Who picks those? I don't know. I don't know if anybody in this room does. So that's an interesting thing to me, is finding out how the processes work, how people are selected, how the jobs, why we see a town hall or an Elm Street going from one million to four million for one street, a town hall going from 11 million accepted and understood to someplace north of 15 million maybe, unless it's reined in. What are we getting for that 15 million? What are we getting for the 4.5 million on Elm Street, if allowed? What about the other streets? What about the sidewalks? That's where I think you gain financial stability is if you share with the people and it's more of an open book than, than a closed-door session. So that's what I would see. I would prioritize, let the people decide. You have a town meeting, town vote, what do they see as their priorities? Where do you want your money spent? Again, everybody spends a lot to live in Cohasset and it's well worth it at times. Thank you.
All right. Question eight.
Excuse me, Nancy, I think this will be our last question.
Okay. So do you want question eight or question nine?
Question eight.
Okay. Question eight. And for fairness, I'm going to start with Paul Lejeune.
Wow, you're really on the top now.
All right, question eight. The league and most Americans care deeply about access to voting. It is at the heart of our democracy. There are two articles for town meeting, one sponsored by the select board, that would ask the state to revise laws so that citizens can participate in town meeting remotely as well as attending in person. What do you think about this idea? Paul, we'll start with you.
My biggest problem with this proposal is that how do you regulate who's at the other end remotely? I know there's issues. We used to have a 200-person forum, then they dropped it down to 100 and it's easy to control a town meeting. However, just like other meetings, I think they, it's not the same, Evan Flo, we're one of the, I think it was our last town, because of my business, I'm in town halls all over the South Shore. We still sign into town hall. Our regular meetings, board of health, planning, whatever, is zoomed. It's not the same thing as sitting in front of people and having the discussion. So no, I would not propose it because I don't think it's as effective. And I have a security issue with it as well, is who's there? issue with it as well, is who's there.
Next, Jack?
Yes, thank you. This goes to the heart of the democratic process. Basically, the two articles are two sides of the same coin. One has to do with getting it through the state, and the other one has to do with maintaining a little bit of community control on the process. As far as the security is concerned, the answer to that is, it's no longer an issue. Every one of us goes in, we sign online, we do all of our finances on there. In my, in my business, large sums of money routinely go back and forth with a click and all that. How they know that it's accurate, I don't know, but I know that they do, because if it wasn't, all hell would break loose. So now we have the question of what happens to the democratic process? Well, whether you're a senior citizen who can't get there, or a young family that can't get a babysitter, you kind of can't get there sometimes. And the other thing is, that's, it's kind of, you learn after a lot of Zoom meetings, is a lot of people can, will stay for the whole thing, and they will listen because they're comfortable. They're at home. If they have to use the restroom, or they're hungry, they go to town hall, they're stuck there. And of course, the other thing that we should be aware of is that the phenomenon of people packing the meeting for a vote and then going home is very destructive. People show up, vote a pep thing, and then they go home. With remote, they're at home, they can watch the whole meeting. They're going to be there. So I do believe, on balance, and I love town meeting, I love that interchange, but on balance, for making sure that everybody is part of the democratic process and has full access, I think it's an idea whose time has come, and I think it will make our democracy stronger, and will make the voices of individual voters be able to be voted more often and more effectively. Thank you.
I'm a big supporter of adding this, to increase access to all the voters of Cohasset, especially our people who are disabled, who are people who are in their 80s and, or I should say 90s, or whatever the case may be, to attend, to have some participation. So I kind of did a nerve dive into this whole issue of access and how we can do remote. And I discovered that North Andover has like a bit of a hybrid model. They actually have input coming in, not voting per se. But then, I was really impressed with Wayland. The town of Wayland actually uses your phone, and it's incredibly sophisticated. I think I, it was 2:00 in the morning when I stopped reading about it. So yes, Jack's right, there are ways to do it. And I know many of us sometimes have last-minute emergencies and really feel very sad that we can't participate. Do I like going to town meeting? I do love it. It's a good time to catch up with people and to get a sense of people's feedback. But to increase democracy, we need to increase representation and input.
Paul Grady?
I was going to say, every bit of my thunder's been taken. But yeah, you're right with Post. But I am fully in favor of access, to remote access to voting. I posted that, and I've shared that view. Security right now is a non-issue again, and I, like what Leanne said about the phone access, the security is incredible nowadays. Everybody should have access. Not everybody can get to town meeting. They can't get there for a number of reasons, and I'll repeat what Jack said. Transportation, child issues, health, work, just a number of things that people can't go. It doesn't mean I don't support a robust town meeting. It's kind of a fun way to catch up, see, the old cards go up in the air. But I do find that you get a concentrated block for a certain vote, and then they tend to leave right after that. In a sense, you can do that remotely, but, you know, there's no, there's no issue with that. But you do, you know, this, as it goes, but, you know, the same thing, the same rules apply. So I do think that everybody should have access, everybody should be able to see town meeting. It's inherent on them to attend, but I think that they should be able to do what they're So I do stand in their role.
All right. Thank you. And now, we're going to have a one-minute clarification period. And Nina, does, do you just volunteer for a clarification period, or?
Is there anything that you want to add to what you've said already? Change your mind on something, clarify what you've said before, were you misrepresented by anybody, any of that kind of thing? One minute additional, whatever, you don't have to take it.
So Paul, is that a?
I think Nina's done a wonderful job, and that's what I want to clarify. At the League of Women Voters and the Marterae.
Paul Grady, did you have anything that you would like to clarify? And this is in, this is in addition to a one-minute closing statement, just to be clear.
No, nothing that I want to clarify, because as far as the last eight answers, correct? No, I think I'll, I think we ought to let Paul answer. He's been, everyone's skipping over the.
No, Paul. Paula Jo.
Skipping over what? Do I have anything to clarify? No, I, yes, I, you know what I do. I don't want it to be misunderstood that I don't think there should be representation. I had, my biggest issue with the remote issue is security, and it is. You can control a block just as easy if you do it from someone's house. You put 20 people in someone's house, and you get together, and you all vote at the same time. So it's not exactly cut and dry. So that's why I have that issue.
Jack?
No, I'm all set.
Holly?
I'm all set. Just use this to thank people for coming tonight, and it's great to have everybody here.
And then lastly, we'll do one final round with the closing statements. Again, this is a one-minute closing statement, and we'll begin with Paula Jo.
Now you're picking on me, you are?
I know. I can't get you out of my head.
I have that effect. So I'd like to stand up and say thank you, number one. You know, I've been involved here for a long, long time, and the difference, I guess, is that I'm here every day. I work within a 10- or 15-minute radius of the downtown Cohasset because I run my own business in and around Cohasset, situating, etc. So I see every day the good and the bad that's going on here, the things that are being done right, the things that aren't being done right, the things that are finished, the things that are left unfinished. And so my point is, I'm available, I'm reliable, you can find me anytime, my cell phone, email is on my stuff. Just call me, because I'm a get-it-done guy. I've done it my whole life. When I was in the police department, I negotiated contracts, all but probably one in my 28 years there. I have extensive time doing that, as well as negotiating contracts for my own business. So I'm very comfortable with personnel and dealing with them. And again, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you again. I think this is a wonderful town. And every time when I say, people ask me about conserve Cohasset's character, when I say that to them, almost without exception, they'll pause, they'll think, and they'll smile. And we are so fortunate to live in this town. And as an elected official, and an elected official with a long, long track record of standing up for the good of this town, I think I have a record. It's a proven record. I have a governing experience. I have the strength to stand up against, sometimes there are insider things going on, sometimes there aren't, but I will stand up always for you. And I ask everybody out there, when you go into the voting booth, to think about the proven experience and vote for Jack Creighton for selectman. Thank you. Excuse me, select board member.
Cohasset means a lot to me. I care about its future, and I want to preserve its natural beauty and its historical past. I want to help plan and manage its resources, facilities, preserve its coastline, quality schools, senior services, finances, affordable housing, open spaces, all those type of things in a fiscal, responsible way, and also, always, with the character of the town and the people in it. I want to include everybody in this plan. I want to include people who've been here forever, as well as people who just arrived. I want to use my knowledge and experiences that I learned helping the people since in my 20s, you know, when I worked and volunteered as a PSO member in the kindergarten class, and also rose to be chair. You elected me as your school board person for many years, and also on the advisory. When I learned about all the little ins and outs, I didn't want to run for this board until I knew every single department. I want to use this knowledge and help you all move forward. So vote for me on May 14th.
And Paul Grady?
Again, my thanks to the League of Women Voters and for everybody in this room and everybody who's watching tonight. It's been a great forum. Cohasset is a jewel in the crown of Massachusetts. I'm proud to say that I live here. I'm proud to say that my daughter's gone to the schools from kindergarten on up. It's just a fantastic place to live. You know, we swim in our waters, we run on the beaches, and these are things that are well worth protecting, they're worth fighting for, everything here, be it down to any kind of change, planning for the future. My thoughts, I'm more action-oriented, you know, and I don't always come across as perfect, but I like to get things done. And I tend to want to move straight ahead instead of around corners, and that's what I hope to get done for Cohasset. I'd like to get in there and show some results, bring them up, concrete results that people see. People know that people are working for them. They know their town manager's working with them, we're working as a team. And I thank you for having me, and I hope to earn your vote on May 14th. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you so much for coming and participating, and thank you all for participating. And again, we hope that you all will come out on May 14th to vote at town hall. And again, if you're not available on the 14th, then go to town hall and get your absentee ballot. And you are all also welcome to join the League of Women Voters Hingham, which is actually Hingham Cohasset Hall. Thank you all.